Okay.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioner Miller.
He's there.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioner Hall, good morning. Can you hear me?
Uh, pretty well.
Is my coming through?
There was a little bit of dropout.
Testing, testing.
We hear you okay. It sounds like the signal is a little bit sketchy, but altogether you're coming through fine.
Yep.
Good morning, Commissioner Miller.
Okay. Great, great. Good morning, Commissioner Chuck.
All right, let's get going then. Good morning and welcome. It is Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, ten a.m., and this is the regular meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Chuck is present in our meeting room, as am I, Claire Hall, Board Chair, and Commissioner Miller is joining us remotely today. Good morning, Commissioner Miller.
Good morning, everyone, from the Lincoln City Cultural Center.
Okay. Um, I am going to make one change in the agenda. Uh, I just want to alert everybody to this. Uh, I'm gonna move public comment today. It will come following the adoption of the consent calendar, because I believe that we may see public comment on one or more issues on our agenda today. And, you know, rather than going back and forth, we'll just put the public comment right there. So. We don't have any recognitions or proclamations today, so the next item becomes the adoption of the consent calendar. These are routine items, things that have been discussed at previous meetings. Is there anything on the consent calendar Commissioners would like to pull for individual discussion?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a few things. I have a few.
Okay, which items, Commissioner Miller?
When you're ready.
Uh, yeah, I'm ready. Let us know, please, which items you would like pulled.
I would like to just talk a little bit about this to the Budget Committee. Um, yeah, I saw him at the School Board meeting the other week. Um, Commissioners, I am generally favorable of this appointment. And do we have any sense of, uh, other vacancies we might have right now on the Budget Committee? Or kind of what our status is on Budget Committee going into this cycle?
Well, I believe that at least one of the currently serving members has agreed to participate this year, and I have heard a tentative yes from another. This would be filling the seat of John Heath, who was, you know, we've traditionally, historically, we've done Budget Committee appointments in a different way than most appointments to volunteer positions, that it's been custom in practice for each Commissioner to be able to nominate or select a committee member. And I, and so I was the one who put, who has put Commissioner, Mr. Parsons' name forward. Anything else, Commissioner Miller? Hmm. Okay. Uh, oh, he's back.
Are you there? I'm, yeah.
Yeah, we lost.
Sorry, I shut off my shop, shut off my video.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Miller, your signal is very bad, dropping in and out. So, Mr. Lipp, our PIO is going to call you on the phone.
I think maybe one of your appointments, then?
I'm sorry?
Commissioner Miller, can I try to just call you on my phone and have you on speaker?
Uh, yes, work phone or work cell, gonna call that one?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I always get the two confused, but.
Okay, and then I should maybe mute the Zoom mic?
Yeah, or if he wants to, if he wants to see the video, he can still do that if he kept.
Not sure how well it's gonna capture.
What if we?
Where? And then I can't control it. Oh, okay. Commissioner Miller, would you, would you talk just a little bit so I can see how it's coming through on the Zoom through this microphone?
Yeah, you bet. Testing, check one, two, checking the audio quality.
Can people in the room hear him? Okay, I'm getting thumbs up all over the room. So, uh, back to the Budget Committee appointment. Uh, you had questions. I've tried to address them. Do you want to pull this for separate consideration by the Board? Or are you okay with it being part of the consent calendar that we adopt as a whole?
No, I, no, I'm in support of this, and I appreciate just some background on it, Commissioner Hall. I think that's really helpful to remind me and everyone just how this particular appointment is handled. Uh, so I think, I think we should do a great job.
Yeah, I do too. All right, uh, could I have a motion for adoption of the consent calendar as presented, please?
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
I can give that motion.
Thank you, Commissioners Chuck and Miller. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope, we've got unanimous. All right, now is the time in the agenda, as I announced at the top of the meeting. We're going to take public comment, uh, rather than having it toward the end of the agenda. Um, reason for this, uh, I believe there may be people present here in the room or online as well who would like to address, uh, our decision and action item today, so. Or any other topic, yeah. This would be the time for general public comment as well. So, I'll remind everybody that there is a three-minute time limit, and Mr. Lipp?
Chair, we have three people signed up in the room, but I believe they are all actually here to speak on agenda items.
Um, so. Presenters, okay.
Gentlemen.
Uh, Martin Desmond. Did you want to talk for public comment? Okay, you know the drill. Come on forward, please.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. My name is Martin Desmond. I live here in Newport, and I'm pres, and I'm here, actually, I was hoping Commissioner Miller was gonna be here, though.
Well, he's on the line.
Yeah, he's on the line, so that's good. A couple of weeks ago, Lincoln County held a climate meeting, uh, sort of organized by Marion Seifert, which I think all of you know, and Commissioner Miller was there at the meeting. So, one of the things that we talked about there at the meeting, both Commissioner Miller and Marion Seifert, was this draft climate action plan that the county has produced. And so, so I'm just here to ask, and what Commissioner Miller said was that it was all right to distribute that to the people who attended the meeting. And so what I'm here to do is just simply ask that the Commissioners release it out for public input. And, you know, after you've received the public input, to, uh, uh, you know, to then formally adopt the plan. So anyways, that's all I'm here for, is just to ask you to release it to the public and provide input.
I think we'll consult with staff, and if there are no, uh, concerns we're not aware of, we would release it. I would, I, you know, since this is, uh, something that ultimately would be adopted as a public statement, uh, you know, I would support this, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Um, do we?
Commissioner, Commissioner Hall?
Yes, Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, just a, just a thought on this, um, Martin's been doing great advocacy. Um, what I was hoping is that we could have this as a discussion item, so that the Board can, you know, review where all of this is going. There's a lot of good work going on, but I really think we ought to just, uh, have a meeting of the minds before we, uh, launch it outward. I think that would be wise.
Yeah, I think, uh, a presentation to the BOC, uh, you know, outlining the document would be helpful as well to get us all up to speed and, and let the public know what's in the works.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, is there any more public comment? Anybody in the room? How about anyone online? If so, please use the raise hand function on Zoom to be recognized.
Doesn't appear so, Chair.
All right, well, all right then, we will move along to our decision and action item, short-term rental license moratorium. And I'm going to ask County Council Yule to present this item to us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kristin Yule, County Council. Um, so before you, this has been brought as a discussion item previously. Um, you set a moratorium to expire on March thirty-first, and this is regarding any available licenses, which currently only Zone Six and Seven. Can you actually pull up on the Sheriff's Office page the Zone information? Right now, the only available licenses are in Zone Six and Seven. Um, so the options before you Commissioners are, you could allow the moratorium to expire at the end of the month. You could extend the moratorium. You could change the number of allowed licenses in Zone Six and Seven, if that's your desire. So there's those three options that I see moving forward. If you actually just go up, can, okay, yep, just that. Um, so currently in Zone Six and Seven, you allow forty-seven and forty-five licenses respectively. Um, you can see the available licenses are in only those two zones. Any questions?
Would you like to see the waitlist?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
It's, it's.
December tenth won the most recent?
I think that December, yeah, December was the most recent.
Okay, so now where, where's the waitlist? I've seen that, okay, so.
Would just be these from here down and in the next page that are eligible.
So, have you or has anybody added up, you know, how many potential applicants there are? If we do go with dropping the moratorium and not taking any other action, how many people would be in competition for those seventeen licenses?
It is approximately twenty-five or so per zone.
Okay.
Fourteen of the available licenses are in Zone Seven, so a large percentage of the people who apply there could get them if they're finally eligible.
Yeah.
Can we go back?
Yes.
Want to go to this?
Yes. Yeah.
So, again, this indicates, in five of the regions, uh, dropping the moratorium would have no impact at all, because they're all significantly over the, uh, license limits we adopted when we put this ordinance in place three years ago. Um, I'd like to offer some thoughts, just to kind of kickstart the conversation. You know, when I shared on my Facebook page, which has become a pretty large platform for discussion of issues, that there would be a possibility we'd be considering this, you know, I had a small flood of people saying, "Extend the moratorium, extend the moratorium." I know a lot of folks don't want any STRs, no more new STRs. Um, but, you know, in this case, we never intended this moratorium to be a permanent thing. It was adopted during COVID, and also, I think we kept it, well, actually, we did let it lapse briefly, and we had, uh, I think, nine people show up the next morning wanting to submit their applications. Uh, but again, this was overlaid, I think, in, another reason was the fact that we were facing significant court challenges to our ordinance. And I think in a worst-case scenario, if it had been, uh, significant, significant portions of it or all had been overturned, this was gonna be a check on the, you know, a check on the growth of licenses. So. Uh, you know, another option would be to extend the moratorium for several more months. I've had people suggest that to me. Uh, Commissioner Chuck, I'm already learning, is a quick study, which doesn't surprise me, but, you know, it might be nice to give him a chance to get further up to speed on this issue, uh, so he could weigh in. Or, uh, you know, the other option identified, if we do want to stop any new licenses at this point, you know, the way to do it really permanently, rather than indefinitely extending the moratorium, would be to reduce the number of allowable licenses in Regions Six or Seven. You know, I can see valid arguments for all of these standpoints, viewpoints. Uh, I'll turn to Commissioner Chuck first. Do you have any thoughts on this?
No, thank, thank you, Chair.
Catch up, Guards.
No, 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 I'm good.
Yeah, okay.
As far, I think you stated pretty much everything I've already heard and heard from the last four or five years on this subject.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I don't think we need more time for the moratorium. And, you know, personally, I think if we could just cap the licenses of what they are, I think that would be my, my preference.
Okay. Commissioner Miller, your thoughts?
Yes, am I coming through okay for you?
Hearing, yep.
Yep.
Getting thumbs up all, thumbs up all over.
Yeah, thank you for the overview, Claire Hall, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Chuck. Um, where I would like to go on this right now is, I would like to extend the moratorium, and I would like for us to circle back, take a look at this really, really business program, uh, and do, and do a review. Um, so that's where I'm at right now. Uh, I can provide more details on some things that I certainly think we need to look at, you know, density, the size of those zones, um, the distance of, uh, STRs to each other. So I think it just would be really good for us to see where we've been, uh, and see where we really want to go. My sense is that this community, uh, really needs this workforce housing, and I, and I, I do too. Um, and to that end, I would also like for us to, and as Commissioner Hall, he said, you know, social media is a great way for us to gather how people are feeling, but, um, you know, maybe even possibly a survey or something of that nature for us to, uh, get a wide temperature gauge on where people are at, although my gut tells me, uh, it is workforce housing forward. Uh, but we take some time and, and examine this. Uh, and then, depending on what we find out, let's, uh, you know, we can move appropriately. But that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Okay, so if we did go that direction, I'm wondering how long an extension we might want to do. Uh, you've suggested a lot of actions, which I think would be very helpful and appropriate, but I think we also would need to be realistic about our ability to, uh, juggle this and, and get those goals accomplished in a timeframe when we're also about to go into budget cycle, which we all know is always the busiest time of the year for us and might be uniquely challenging. Uh, so would you think like maybe four months, six months?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's right. I just think we really need to commit to it. Um, but that would be an acceptable timeframe.
Okay. Commissioner Chuck?
Well, I think that his, Commissioner Miller had some, uh, his, has some merit to his discussions, but I also think that, as you said, we are coming up on the budget season. Uh, we have a county manager that we need to be hiring, and there's a lot of uncertainty right now as far as budgets in the state and federal government. So, um, I don't know if putting this off for six more months will get, get us more information, and I think we also need to take into consideration the, uh, burden this puts on the sheriff's staff to just have this hanging out there. And so that, that would be my, my statements.
Commissioners, um, so if you decided, if you decided to go with, um, setting the caps where they are currently forty-four and thirty-one respectively, um, that doesn't prevent us staff working on, looking at some of these issues. And, I mean, a survey, things like that would take a considerable amount of time.
Yeah, depending on methodology, but to have a good, uh, scientific sample we could be confident in, yeah, that's not a simple task.
So if the consensus is to not allow any more licenses, I think Commissioner Chuck's suggestion makes sense to just set the caps where they are. Um, that doesn't mean you can't revisit that in the future and reallocate the zones.
Mm-hmm. So, one possibility would be a motion to reduce the caps in Regions Six and Seven, but also give directions to staff to help us and work with us in gathering some of this information. You know, something, uh, I probably should have shared sooner, but we do have some information, uh, from both our planning staff and Sheriff's Office. And, you know, it is clear, the number of complaints about STRs from neighboring property owners, it's, it's dropped, uh, you know, seventeen calls for violations in two thousand twenty-three versus ten last year. But yeah, I, I think we can look at the effectiveness of the complaint system. Certainly, you know, for whenever the day comes, it may not come when any, any of us are still in office, but when we do start to get below the caps in one or more of these regions, then especially, you know, we should be prepared. Is there something we can do about STR density and spacing, for example? And I think it'd be, I think it would be more helpful to address that now, rather than having, having that situation developed and saying, "Oh gee, what do we do?" So. Commissioner Chuck, were you formulating a motion by any chance?
I, I was, Chair.
Okay.
So I'd like to move that we cap licenses at the current level and ask staff to look at cap level and make adjustments if necessary.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, I will second the motion then. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Oh, Commissioner Miller did vote aye. Okay, I didn't hear that. Okay, so onward. Now we move to discussion and information items. And first up, a presentation on the upcoming Lincoln County School District bond proposal. So, folks, would you come on forward, please?
Good morning.
Good morning, and you know our usual drill. We, even though we all know you, ask you, for the audience, to introduce yourselves.
My name is Liz Martin. Um, I'm a longtime Lincoln County resident, um, serving on the Lincoln County School Board Board of Directors, um, almost fifteen years in June, and very proud of my time spent there. Enjoy it. Um, I'm here today to talk to you about the upcoming bond. I'd like to introduce Dr. Myelis Tolan, Superintendent of Lincoln County Schools.
Did I just state my name also, or is that good? Okay. All right, I think you have the, there we go.
Give me just a second to get it shared.
No, you're good. You are our first public slideshow presentation, so.
Oh.
Quite excited for today. I'm sure they'll give some feedback for us.
We figure by, uh, the fortieth one, we'll have it down.
Yeah. So, we are here today to, uh, share information with you about the proposed bond renewal measure that we will be placing on the May ballot. All of our documentation has now been officially filed, so we were excited about that yesterday. Awesome, so why are we proposing this bond to the voters? Um, the two thousand eleven bond is set to expire. That bond, one of the major focuses of it was to get Walport, Middle and High out of the tsunami zone. Um, but when that expires, uh, we still have things that we need to continue to take care of for the health, safety and security of our buildings. And so as that expires, we wanted to, uh, be able to move forward in a way that would allow for the existing bond rate to stay in place and not increase taxes. So six big things. These are our key takeaways. We're gonna jump right at them. So the first one, this will be on the May ballot. The next one, um, again, we are proposing that we would not expect to have any increase in the rate. So it would be looking at sixty-five cents per one thousand assessed property value. Uh, we did qualify and received a matching grant from the state, so if this passes, uh, for the seventy-three million that we would be asking for, we would qualify for six million from the state to add to our project list. Um, if past one hundred percent of the bond funds will be used locally for schools, and Liz, do you want to share in the last bond what that looks, looked like, how we also kept money local?
Yeah, um, we, uh, we're in a, um, position where we could hire mostly all local contractors. So it was quite an economic boost to the whole economy. That money stayed here in our economy, and, um, it, so it was, we plan to do the same this next time. So, um, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing, be able to bring a retiring bond from two thousand eleven and retire and bring this one in at the same tax rate.
Okay, so the proposed two thousand twenty-five bond renewal, um, again, maintain the tax rate, address safety and security. So you can see the picture on the right there is of a lockdown button. You can consider those to be much like a fire alarm system. We currently have this system in Sam Case Elementary School, uh, but it is a police notification system that we've been piloting with Newport Police Department. So just like we train five-year-olds when it's appropriate to push a fire alarm, and when it's not, we would do the same thing on a safety and security feature such as this. We're looking at updating some buildings, repair aging schools, and then expanding vocational training classrooms. Part of that might not be necessarily a brand-new vocational classroom, but we're able to do remodel features that would allow for expansion of vocational training, and in some cases, double the capacity. If it's passed, um, some of the big features would be three performing arts auditoriums, um, one in Newport, one in Walport, and one in Toledo. In some cases, those communities don't have a performing arts space, so this would be something that would also add to that community through community input as part of our information gathering. Um, and then significant upgrades to two theater spaces at TAF seven twelve. Uh, years ago, we did receive a grant from the County Commissioners for economic development, and we're able to do pretty extensive upgrades and updates to one of the small theaters at TAF seven twelve. Uh, but those are used a lot by the community as well and need to have continued upgrades and updates to them.
And, and I would add that these, um, performing arts that we're looking at, uh, we're really looking for the community, uh, to be able to use these, uh, you know, ideally, you'd like to see them used every night. And in doing our research, we found out the need is there. The, the facilities we have are being tapped out. And so, um, not only would this be used in our schools, but used heavily by the community.
So as far as the need and what we're looking at, when we did a long-term facility study last year as part of the information gathering for the Board, uh, we identified ninety-three million in capital improvements needed for our eleven schools. Uh, but the Board also had strong intention of being able to do as much as possible without a tax increase. And so we continued to work with our staff in all of our buildings and with the community group and identified seventy-three point three million, um, that we would want to propose in this bond. Okay, how did we get here? All the things. There's a lot on this slide. Do you want to speak to some of what the Board asked, or?
Um, well, I, I think, uh, when looking at this diagram, I, you can see that the input was really important to us and, um, heavily relied on our staff, our, the community, um, students had a big impact. and heavily relied on our staff, our, the community, students had a big input in it too. They're the ones that are going to be using this facility. So I felt like it was a really transparent process and really comprehensive to our needs.
One of the things that was really important to the board as part of information gathering also was to do a demographic study. We know that in Oregon, we're in declining enrollment. A Lincoln County School District is not any different as far as being in declining enrollment. If you remember, there was a purchase of property up in Lincoln City years ago and part of that at that time would have possibly needed a new building to be built. And that is not the case when it comes to capacity anymore. And so they wanted to have this study as part of making their decision, which is why you see most of it being on repairs, updates and necessary things to maintain the health of the facilities that we do have. Okay, so what would the bond measure fund? Safe and secure and accessible schools. So we're looking at what do we need to keep our schools a safe place? Also, what do we need to do to make them accessible? And part of that is also with special education and making sure that we are keeping our buildings in a way that, you know, they're at code and they currently meet accessibility, but that doesn't mean they meet it as well as it can. And so we really want to take a fine look at our buildings around that. Also looking at making sure we have updated alarm systems, updated security cameras and can do everything possible to maintain our facilities. We have at least eleven roofs or partial roofs that are identified as just needing strong maintenance. We have siding, we have plumbing that needs to be taken care of, flooring, windows, electrical and then HVAC work. One of the things that's really unique about Lincoln County School District with our size is we have a very strong facilities department. And so we are able to do a lot of work in-house where we can maintain these things. But we also don't have the capacity to maintain it all on our own. And so part of that is looking at how can we get some of this done in a way that can happen very quickly to save the longevity of buildings that are definitely aging. And then also, it's been important in polling, we did polling and we did a lot of survey data. And career and technical education is definitely something that at one point in time started to be cut in a number of Oregon schools. We've been really working hard at being focused and adding that back. But to be able to meet this need, there's expansion and things that need to happen for facilities so that we can offer really strong current technology and current lab space for what our students would need. And then as well as the performing arts space. As far as technology upgrades, we currently have projectors in all of our classrooms. Our teachers have document cameras. That is not the current technology that when our students leave us, they would be using when they get into the workforce. And so we want to be able to not only provide appropriate and adequate technology for our staff, but also have it in a way where our students are learning how to use updated and current technology that they would see and learn how to use when they leave us. And then also have phone systems that always work and that we can use as our intercom systems throughout the building. How did the school district related taxes we pay in Lincoln County compare to other area districts? It's just an interesting note. When we look at how much in Lincoln County we are currently paying, we're just at sixty-five cents for, per one thousand dollars assessed. And when you look at this, some of these are, you know, we think of them as larger school districts. But when we look at our comparable size, we actually start to match up and fall in a medium-sized school district. So we are on a lower end. But again, through information gathering, that is something that the board really weighed. They looked at multiple options on this of amounts, but not increasing the tax rate was one that was important to them. If it doesn't pass, it's all still there. So if, if the bond doesn't pass, bond dollars would not be used to be able to do a number of things in this presentation. Lincoln County School District keeps a one, a five and a ten-year facility study plan outside of when we do long-term facility study plans. And so we would continue as our normal method of operation to work through one, five and ten-year plans. If the bond passes, we would continue with the long-term facility group that we had. We'd be more than happy to take new members for that. That committee would continue to look at the updates that we have done and make sure that we are also spending the money on projects that we identified to the voters as being high-needs projects in our different lists. Those lists can be found on our website as well. In the two thousand eleven bond, as Vice Chair Martin said, sixty-three point three percent of the proceeds were spent in Lincoln County with local contractors. We were very proud that all of our projects were completed on time and on budget. District-wide HVAC, plumbing, electrical and energy upgrades happened, and those would continue to be part of this bond if it were to pass. District-wide fields were put in place. So you may have seen that we have turf fields. We were one of the first in the state to really go district-wide in turf fields. That's really increased public use. One of the things we've noticed at a school like Taft Elementary that's right next to Taft Seven Twelve's turf football field, they can go outside more than at some of our other schools. And so in this bond measure, we're looking at turfing all of our elementary school fields to increase outside play capability for recess. You can see that in action at Sam Case Elementary where they have turfed outside playfield. We continue to look at interior upgrades. In the last one, we were able to remove all of our modulators except for sort of one at Taft Elementary. The music room is actually part of a modular building that's attached to the school. And that is something that we would want to be able to remove. We were able to put on classroom additions and move Walport High out of the tsunami zone, all on time and on budget. What we need from you is to be able to share this information, but really help us find people that need information about the bond itself. If people have questions, direct them our way so that we can answer any questions that they have about this proposed measure. You could probably guess the final reminders. It's on the May ballot. It is not expected to increase taxes the goals of renewal bond. And we did qualify for the six million dollar match from the state of Oregon if this bond passes.
All right. We really want to thank you for your time. I'd just like to, this comment, you know, I went to Lincoln County Schools and my schools are, the one that I graduated from high school, I believe is sixty years old. So I like to refer to it as, we're taking care of our homes. We're putting new roofs, we're giving them paint job so we can keep these schools going on. We cannot bond enough to build a new school. So taking care of the ones that we have is going to provide what we want for the children, our children in the future is a safe learning environment, one that they're proud and also the community is proud of their schools, how they look and how they function. So again, thank you for your time and if any questions, please let us know.
All right, are you open to that right now if we've got anything from the board? I'll turn to Commissioner Miller first. Do you have any questions or feedback for our presenters?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just really some comments, I think, no questions. I one hundred percent support this. I think the match is excellent. And in the last year, I've been to two school board meetings and have also started attending these site visit meetings. And I'm just always impressed with the caliber of work going on at the school district. So appreciate the information today. This gives us something to echo on your behalf if we choose to. And just really grateful for the education that you provide our family. So good luck on this and thanks for the information today.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Chuck, anything from you on this?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So the six million dollars, is that just a one-time or is that recurring?
Yeah, I wish it was recurring. No, it's one-time, yeah.
And those funds are secured? I mean, the state's going through a bunch of stuff right now.
Yes, yes, those are secured.
And if...
Just, they don't carry over though. So if we were to not pass a bond, when we apply, you apply for when it goes on the ballot. And so it would be this time. If it didn't pass, if there were to be a different bond attempt, you'd have to reapply and...
And then the last would be, if it does pass, are you going to put out a schedule of when these things are going to be completed so the public can follow?
Yes, that's a great question. So we would work, we'll be, one of the things the board looked at on this one is do we have the capacity to run the bond internally with our own project management or would we need to hire out? And we ran our own last time with Rich Bologna as Facilities Director, and so we would continue that process. So yes, we would have that list and then we would have the committee that would also be able to watch and get updates on what's happening with that list if things have to change and make sure that we're maintaining what we said we'd do.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you. I think it was a great presentation. I think for the first time at the plate, you knocked it out of the park. And so much of this resonates with me, including the focus on protecting, maintaining public assets. You know, I think everybody knows, but maybe in case if there's somebody out there who doesn't realize that deferring maintenance just costs you more in the end. I was remembering two thousand and ten when we were in the second year of intense cutting and the Budget Committee. You know, usually we don't get down into the weeds. We give general directives. But I remember we actually had a great debate on doing, you know, deferring several significant projects that needed to be done for another year. And in many cases, of course, it ended up costing us more when we finally did move forward. So good stewardship. I always like that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You are welcome. All right. Dave Price, Vice President of OCCCCC? Too many Cs, but yeah. Okay, would you both introduce yourself and your positions for the record?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Hall. My name is Dave Price. I am the Vice President for Engagement at Oregon Coast Community College.
Hi, I'm Kellyanne Parker. I'm the Assistant Director for the Small Business Development Center, otherwise known as the SBDC.
All right, the floor is yours.
Well, great. You have me down as the presenter, but that is not the case. You've heard from me too many times and you're going to hear from Kellyanne. I just wanted to say by brief introduction, Kellyanne is really our first ever Assistant Director at the SBDC. And she oversees, among other things, a small business management program that you folks have known well and supported for lo these many years. And I just wanted to thank you at the start to say that you, as a county, have lots of choices when it comes to investing your economic development dollars and the fact that we've been able to grow this program. And you'll hear just to what extent. I think it'll surprise you. With, without that support from you at the foundation, I'm not sure any of what you're about to see would be possible. So thank you. And by the way, I just wanted to congratulate you on your appointment, Commissioner Chuck. I haven't spoken to you before. But with that, Kellyanne Parker.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to echo what Dave has said. The support that you give us is absolutely paramount to what we do. For those of you who are not familiar with the Small Business Development Center, we really have two main functions, which is one, to provide no-cost business advising to anyone interested in starting a business all the way through to selling their business and everything in between. We meet with all different people in the community to help them talk through their idea, to see if it is a business and to help them go into business if it is. Our other thing is to provide business education, and this is where a lot of your support has contributed greatly. Love to share the results. Next slide. So as you can see, this is where we are getting our funding from now. Business Oregon, thirty-four-ten, which unfortunately we won't receive after this, that was a one-time thing, from the Small Business Administration, which is the umbrella that we live under. OCC, which is our host facility, the county, of course you, thank you so much for your ongoing support. The city of Lincoln City, Northwest Oregon Works. We receive program income from the classes that we teach. And then we've also received a wonderful grant from Georgia Pacific as well. So we had four hundred and two or twelve client visits this last year. And that was with myself and two part-time people that started halfway through the year. So obviously this year we'll have them all year and that's a thousand hours of advising support. Next slide. So currently we're supporting businesses, as you can see, not yet in business, so pre-venture. And as you can see, also supporting businesses that have been in business. And a lot of what we do for existing businesses is we help them in crisis. We help them get loans, put together business plans and we help them with their exit strategy to sell their business to someone else. These are some of the types of business. As you can see, construction is big, retail is big, real estate. There are a lot of different segments that we have a lot. If you see arts, entertainment and recreation, often that's our photographers and artists that are part of the community. So the types of businesses that we support, we support a broad range of people that are a sole entrepreneur, that are employing themselves through their business as well as other bigger businesses that are more well-established, that have been able to grow and bring on other employees. So our, one of our core pillars of what we're supposed to be working on is to help support new jobs in the community. So these are some of the classes that we do. One of the things, we just had ten people get their CCB license about two weeks ago. They'll be starting their own businesses and we're helping them through that process. If you see the Excel and the QuickBooks, that is actually a really unique partnership that we have. Greg Price, who is the Director of both our center and then also the Columbia Gorge, gives us the ability to work with our sister center and have them provide classes that we can stream in through our clients as well. We talked about the CCB training and the small business management, which I'll talk a little bit more. We've expanded our classes, including we just recently had a class, A Day in the Life of Disability, where people got to experience firsthand by using goggles, using walkers, weights on their hands, what it is like to go in and out of a building when you have disabilities. That was interesting. All right. And so our youth entrepreneurship program, this is something we started last year and it's a wonderful partnership with the school district. We partnered with the school district. I work directly with the career and, oh my goodness, my college and careers counselors within each of those schools. And then we're able to recruit kids to become part of the youth entrepreneurship program. And then the exciting thing is that is at the end of this program, there's a Shark Tank event. Last year we did it at Hatfield. This year it's going to be at the Lincoln City Cultural Center and they're going to compete for real prizes. So the first prize winner will win three thousand dollars. And last year, our first prize winner actually started their business as a taxidermist. So we have actual businesses that came out of that. Georgia Pacific is providing a grant award for the prizes this year. Our small business management program, this is a really core piece of what we do. It is designed to be a ten-month program where people learn from industry experts that we bring in to learn about financial literacy and HR and marketing, all the things that they need to run a successful business. This last year, we launched retail for the first time. And next, in May, actually, we'll be launching a nonprofit program. In the past, we often had ten or maybe fifteen people that would attend our small business management programs. But with the team that we have, we actually have fifty-two people that have signed up for the small business management programs. That does not even include our nonprofit, which we're about to launch. We expect to have thirty people in that. The wonderful thing, when it says full-time equivalent, doesn't necessarily relate to you, but it's the way that we feed our host facility, the OCCC, that we provide fifty-two new full-time students to the school. This is our team. Obviously, I'm on the list there. We have Leslie Hildula, who also... This is our team. Obviously, I'm on the list there. We have Leslie Hildula, who also divides time between Columbia Gorge and our program. She's a program manager for the Retail and Restaurant Small Business Management Program. We added Michelle and Shannon, who are part timers. Caston is part of our capital access team and has actually recently helped one of my clients who is working on a Department of Defense grant and has received some seed money in the form of an investor working with the capital access team. Sean O'Connor, who does digital marketing. We had Gabriela Oriana, and we'll be actually recruiting for a new bilingual position this year. Hiring, we just mentioned that. We will be the 3410 is coming to an end. We were the grateful recipients of that. And so we really do rely on our community partners to help keep going what we have going. As you can see, that we've had a lot of growth in this last year that we expect to increase, and especially with your support. The economic impact obviously is opening businesses. So you see the number of unique clients that we served. But we opened 19 businesses. We helped 19 businesses open their doors, get an LLC, capital formation. We helped people get $692,000 in business loans to buy a bigger boat was one of them, buy a business and a variety of different types of equipment for construction business. We had some of our clients had sales increases of up to a cumulatively of a billion dollars. And just a funny aside, I wish we all had the answers. And I just want to thank you again for your support. And we hope to be able to count on your ongoing support in the future. I hope to present much bigger numbers next year.
Well, these numbers are pretty impressive right now, I'd say. Wonderful report, wonderful to hear about the burgeoning of opportunities to get more and more folks under the SBDC umbrella. You know, I was thinking, we must have been supporting this a long time because I know it was already in place when I became a Commissioner 20 years ago. And I, as long as I'm here, I'll support this and I hope and believe other Commissioners will as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall.
Commissioner Chuck?
Just thank you for the presentation and you know what you're doing for our community. It's great that you're allowing these young people to learn about businesses and start their own.
Commissioner Miller, are you still with us?
Yes. Yeah, I'm still with you. Thank you so much for this presentation. I mean, these thousands of hours SBDC is providing, I mean, it's just so, so vital. We, I think the county needs to see itself, the county government, in a partnership with these objectives. Because if local businesses are thriving, you know, we're all doing well. And we may be in a global environment these days with the reach of the internet, but local bricks and mortar and also helping local businesses with those global skills as well. It's just totally, totally important. Great work as well in that partnership, too, with the Economic Development Alliance and the summit. So I will continue to support SBDC and really appreciate the update. Just keep doing what you're doing. It's amazing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, yes.
Anything else?
Yes, one more.
What?
If you if you don't mind, I just would like to point out that thanks to Kellyanne and her team's amazing work, there we've served hundreds of clients this past year and other centers, much larger in larger markets have served hundreds and hundreds more. But the Small Business Administration's Small Business of the Year for the State of Oregon is actually, and this has been announced, is actually right here in Lincoln County. It is Trade Wins Charters out of Depot Bay, a client for at least the past five years, if not before that, too. But I just want to say thank you for that work and congratulations to Tad and Noel and team. And you'll be reading a lot more about that in the days to come.
Wonderful news. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you for referring.
Okay, we'll move on to our third discussion and information item regards the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Commissioners and the Sheriff's Office as related to emergency management. And Council Yule, can you kind of bring us up to speed on this, please?
So this is something that comes up periodically. So the Board of Commissioners is delegated authority under statute for the functions of emergency management. And we historically have had a contract in place delegating that to the Sheriff's Office. So this is renewing that agreement.
Okay. Yeah, I think that this began in 2010, and it's really worked well. I have not had a chance to fully review the document yet. Are there any significant changes? Or is this pretty much rolling forward the what we've got now? And maybe our presenters will address that, too. Please introduce yourself or the audience.
Good morning, Chair Hall. I'm Commissioners. I am Jamie Russell, the Administrative Lieutenant for your Sheriff's Office.
And I'm Samantha Buckley, Lincoln County Emergency Manager.
All right. Well, first off, can I ask, I'm sure you want to present, but is this basically status quo carrying forward?
It is, Chair Hall. The memorandum that you have before you, the only real changes to it are name changes. As you know, we have had some updated position changes within our office. And so this document memorializes those specific changes and positions within within our office and within this memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
Great. And I just wanted to give you all a brief update on what we've been working on in emergency management over the last, I guess, year or so. I don't remember how long it's been. So some of the planning things we've been working on are updating our natural hazards mitigation plan. This is a five year plan that we're required to have. And that'll come across your desk when it's all done for your review. And we are hoping to have that completed by the end of this annual calendar year. So December of 2025, we're working with a contractor on that project. And that's pretty standard. So that is one of our big projects we've been working on. We are in the final stages of completing our evacuation plan for the county. This was also completed with a contractor. And we're just wrapping up the final edits on that before it comes to you again for your review. We are doing an update to our emergency operations plan. That's pretty standard. That has to be done every two years. And this is the year to do it. So we are doing lots of plans this year, lots going on in the planning department. Very thankful for Susan, who's joined our team. She's excellent at planning. We do have, we just closed the deadline for the Board of Commissioners Emergency Preparedness Grant. I believe that's on the agenda for today. And we had 13 applicants for that grant. And we'll be presenting a formalized presentation for you all a little bit later, once we've got those all finalized, and sharing what a couple of them are with the boards that you kind of know where that money's been going. And then we also have been working on our Public Safety Radios program. We received a 2 million COPS grant for that program. And we are making our, we're very excited to be making our first purchase for that grant this week. So we're moving ahead with that.
Can I ask, is that a federal grant?
It is a federal grant. Yes.
And we have money in hand, or?
We get reimbursed when we spend.
Reimbursed.
Yes. Yes. But we've talked with their legal teams and we're feeling hopeful. And then, sorry, I lost my train of thought.
I'm sorry.
No, you are great. And then we have been planning for some outreach. Spring season is typically a big outreach season for us. And we have a tsunami awareness week coming in June. That's actually coordinated by Oregon Emergency Management at the state, which is excellent. So they'll be bringing a couple of presentations to us for that in June. And we'll do two wildfire presentations in May for our communities, among appearing at a variety of community events that other community partners plan. So we always like to go table when we can. So we've been pretty busy as we roll into the spring, and we hope to continue to keep busy and provide our vital preparedness services for the county. So any questions?
Yeah. So I've actually got a question for councils. So if we have consensus from the BOC today to adopt this, can we just move it to consent calendar next week?
You can.
Okay. Commissioner Chuck?
Just thank you for the work you do and for the presentation.
Commissioner Miller, are you still with us?
Yes, Chair Chair Hall. Could we move this to decision and action instead of consent? Just to give us a little bit more time. I realize a lot of this is very similar to, you know, what we've done before. But we'd love the opportunity to meet with our emergency manager and get a chance to see how things are going. I would appreciate that modification there. If you give us maybe a little more opportunity for some final discussion if it's needed.
All right. I don't have any problem with that. So we will schedule it as a decision and action item at the next meeting in two weeks. All right. Well, anything else? Thanks for the presentation. Hey, we do have one Commissioner report that was submitted from Commissioner Chuck, and I believe that is part of the meeting package. So would encourage everyone interested to take a look at that. As I mentioned a couple of times at the top of the meeting, we moved public comment earlier in the meeting today. We don't have an executive session scheduled today. So before adjournment, the last thing is reminding everybody of our upcoming meetings. We're on the every other Wednesday schedule, 10 a.m. here at the courthouse and also online. So just to note quickly, our coming meetings are on April 2, April 16, May 7, and May 21. We moved it. I announced that a couple of times at the beginning of the meeting, but come on forward, please. Yeah. Okay.
For the record, my name is Jenna Wallace. I am the Lincoln County District Attorney. I've thought a lot about what I want to say in the next three minutes in an attempt to describe what I've experienced internally over the past nine months as the District Attorney. Three minutes is not long enough to give you an overview of the challenges I have faced and the roadblocks I have met. I wonder daily when I will stop paying for the sins of my predecessor, when I will be recognized and respected by you as the elected District Attorney of Lincoln County, when I will be given true latitude to make decisions for my office that have no budgetary impact, when your employees will stop signing documents on my behalf without my knowledge, when my emails will not be monitored by Human Resources or County Council, and when $34,000 will not be secretly deducted from my budget. To be honest, I don't know if that day is coming. You have allowed Kristin Yule and David Collier to block me, stop me, control me, threaten me, and attempt to silence me. And when I raised concerns about how?
Excuse me, District Attorney Wallace, but the guidelines for public comments specifically call on for no personal attacks?
Okay.
I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
And when I raised concerns about how I was being treated and the unethical conduct I was observing, instead of taking my concerns seriously and investigating the conduct, I was ignored, then dismissed, and told by your Director of Human Resources that if I did not stop voicing my concerns, I would be investigated. Your personnel rules devote pages to whistleblower protections that mean nothing in practice as applied to me or employees in my office. Commissioner Miller is the only person who has repeatedly sought transparency and equality in policy and procedure for all Lincoln County employees, including elected officials. He has requested your board meet an executive session to discuss and address these concerns and has repeatedly been ignored. And when his request for executive sessions didn't work, Commissioner Miller raised questions publicly and was immediately ostracized and villainified in an attempt to silence him from uncovering the truth. I recognize that you don't know me, and it's easy to think the worst of me when you are surrounded by an individual who has been unable to let go of the tumultuous relationship that predated my appointment. You probably have no idea why I became a prosecutor or why this career is so important to me. So I would like to take a minute to give you some insight into me. When I was three, a federal search warrant was executed on my home, and it was discovered that my biological father was involved in an international child pornography crime ring. When I was seven, he was arrested again for sexually abusing one of my close friends. I can still recall naively playing video games while he let a seven year old into his bedroom. I couldn't even tell you the excuse he told me to normalize this behavior. Additional victims came forward, and he spent essentially the rest of his life in prison. I knew in high school I wanted to do something with my life.
Excuse me again, District District Attorney Wallace, I'm sorry to interrupt again. Here's the three minute time.
Additional victims spent essentially the rest of his life in prison. I knew in high school I wanted to do something with my life to protect children, to protect the children that I was unable to protect when I was a child. And I often think about how blessed I am that God has put me in this position to be a voice for vulnerable children and to hold predators accountable for their conduct, and maybe, just maybe, protect another innocent child or adult from being victimized. You might not understand that every time you allow others to interfere with my office and allow them to assert their power over me, you don't hurt me, you hurt your employees, you hurt this community, you hurt crime victims. Because every time I have to stand up for myself, my office, and my employees, it is time that I am not advocating for the victims and citizens of Lincoln County. I have come to terms with the fact that there is nothing I can do to change the culture of Lincoln County until two of the three Commissioners decide that the current status quo is unacceptable. Ultimately, you don't answer to me, you answer to the citizens of Lincoln County. And you can leave this meeting and choose to look the other way and allow the concerns I have raised to remain beneath the shadows, or you can seek the truth and investigated the repeated conduct I have requested to be investigated on three separate occasions over the past five months. As for me, I have done everything within my power to speak out and fight against the corruption in your County Council's Office and Human Resources Department. And I am tired of fighting for accountability and transparency when it is not a priority of two of the three of the former Board of Commissioners. I am hopeful that with Commissioner Chuck joining the board that things will change, and the majority will be in favor of seeking the truth, not covering up the corruption. I know by speaking today, I am risking further retaliation, but I am not scared of Kristin Yule or David Collier, and I will not be controlled or silenced by either of them.
Okay, we're about five and a half minutes now. Thank you for your input and.
Chair Hall, I have five more sentences I would request in total time.
Go ahead. Go ahead, please.
If you choose to do nothing, I have no doubt that I will be investigated, and your employees will publish the predetermined results that satisfy their goal to deflect from their own unethical behavior. But I want you to know that I'm not going anywhere. I will not be run out of office or pressured to resign. I will continue to show up every single day and advocate for the victims of Lincoln County, because that is what the victims of Lincoln County deserve. And that is what the people of Lincoln County elected me to do. Being an elected official is not about the power or the title or the photo op. It's about seeking truth and justice in the face of adversity. It's about putting others' needs above your own self serving interests. It's about doing the next right thing, regardless of the circumstances or personal consequences. Regardless of the adversity that I will face, I will continue to do the next right thing, regardless of the personal cost. My question for you is, will you? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. And as I think everybody's aware, but I'll just restate, it is custom and practice of the board not to respond to public input immediately. But you know, if if individual Commissioners or we as a body decide that response is appropriate, that would happen at this point. All right. At this point, then, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody.